...at the middle school tonight, so they can tell us later. It's 7:13, 2017.
Mr.?
Here.
Mr. Blaze?
Here.
Mr. Eber?
Here.
Mr. Merd?
Here.
Mr. Loizao?
Here.
And Mr. Parker?
Mr. Parker, sure.
Okay.
You've got two... Oh yeah.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have to add one to the agenda tonight. And it's a different rule for the church. For, um, sort of, the church, right on, that was on, uh, 14. I have a motion for August to be added. So, second, discussion?
No.
We have two votes we need to sign up on as far as minutes. And first, we can go for 11 if that will be...
Make a motion to approve minutes for 11, 2017, as per...
Second, any discussion on that? Any on paper? Next is, um... Obviously not.
Make a motion to approve minutes of August 9, 2017, as per...
Second, any discussion on that one? Okay. And then we add the agenda is, did everyone get a copy of this? Everybody got a copy of this?
They should have, yes. I put this in their packets, yes.
So just to look at the public's understanding, just reading the minutes and all of this, it's a preparation, it's only one of the deals, traffic difficult areas, a lot of churches have a 26 over three. And those who don't know, the deal is good for six months, you have to do something affirmative in that timeframe in order to be able to give out or the life expires. If you come back one time prior to the six months and ask to have it extended for another six months, it's just really done. So I, I was just reading quickly, you need, of course, a phone asking for six months' extension, official six month working to our Friday start date, you'll be planning, have planning work in December, site plan approved and should be seen in the building permanent January, February 2018. All this work together, the construction contracts and getting the site working first, that will give us a five week window to build a site and foundation work and still be inside the intersection. Do you have a motion on this? So, second, discussion on this? Through standard, I have no problem with it. Thank you. And welcome, Craig. As far as, if the letter we received, any more details, the letter received from Stephen Lynch, and he also called me for the record, thanking us. He's going to make some different plans and decide to surrender the base on whether he's going to do the additions. So he's working with, I believe, trying to help answer that, what that's possible.
But I'll go to appeal the property to process. So basically, the process. So just seeing a lot of that.
And first appeal, appeal number 267, he needs a special exception appeal request by Charming Brothers Chapel LLC, 450 County Road, this is now part two, parcel five D, just for record, I didn't see, no article, I think, probably, I don't know, probably something else, but it was... Okay, thank you. So for the explanatory chapter, we'll look over it. There's actually two sections, by the way, one, first one, practical, the second, the special exception. Or reverse, sorry, special exception, and practical.
Good evening. My name is Jason Nasco, GM Roma Consulting Engineers, and on behalf of Mark Tibbetts with Charming Vintage Chapel LLC, I'm here to present to you on the proposed Vintage Chapel wedding venue in intersection from Broad Turn Road and County Road. The 1.86 acre parcel is located in the rural farming main catch housing zoning district and is the site of former First Universus Church. The post development will maintain the existing place of worship use allowed in the RFM zone by providing use of the existing church to allow couples to get married within it. These wedding ceremonies are considered religious service, meeting the definition of the place of worship use. Remaining function of the property is the reception following the religious ceremony. The existing hall and property is, uh, is going to be used for inside receptions for, for prep for workspace, prep for any other reception outside. In addition, the applicant is planned to construct a neighbor patio and awning connecting the two buildings to cover the social area for guests. They also, the applicant is also intending to erect a larger party tent to allow outdoor receptions. The intent is to keep the awning reception tent erect from early spring to early fall and disassemble it during the winter months. We're also anticipating that as typical, the weddings will be on Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and the afternoon into the evening. All of these structures and features of the property will be accessory to the church, which is why we're here to look for the approval of the special exception of the adjunct use to replace worship. The development will utilize the existing onsite well, the existing overhead power telephone and cable. The existing septic field is not going to be large enough to, uh, provide sewer service to the new expansion of the event center. The septic design was prepared by Longview Partners LLC and it was built as per that. We do understand that traffic is going to be a concern in this area, just mostly just the intersection. A traffic study will be prepared as part of the town's site plan approval, uh, site plan, plan board permit. We also understand that the DOT is in preliminary stage of a new intersection design for that location. This eventual redesign will only increase the safety in this area and making the sites' traffic impact even more safer. We have been in communication with the fire department to discuss any additional fire suppression requirements with proposed use of the facility. The fire chief does need to review a couple of, unless he's already done that. Has he already reviewed the awning design?
No, he wants to see more of it.
Okay. But he did, he did say that he didn't feel that any further fire suppression or devices or sprinklers, anything like that was needed for the post use. He did indicate there would be a great use of the property. We will also be communicating with the police department through the planning process. Since the project will most likely disturb one acre of land, the stormwater management of the property will need to incorporate stormwater quantity and quality control and erosion and seduction control measures. This design will be reviewed by town staff. Now looking at compatibility of the proposed use in surrounding neighborhood. One of the concerns was any new structures and how would that fit in with the neighborhood. There actually won't be any new permanent structures proposed. The two existing structures have been there, the church has been there for over 200 years. The proposed function tent, uh, function tent will only be seasonal and it will be primarily screened by, from County Road, Broad Turn Road, by the church and existing areas alone. This property is surrounded by conservation land on two sides and two residential properties on either side of the fairly busy public, uh, public property. Generation, any excessive noise such as DJ or live music, anything like that, will actually be restricted to daytime hours, the set report and the good neighborhood coordinates from town. The applicant, Mark Tibbetts, was here with me tonight, also owns A Plus Party Rentals. He's been in the business for decades now and he understands the business and sees a big opportunity in repurposing this property by maintaining and utilizing the existing historical character of the church, which we understand that there's been several businesses that have come in looking to buy the property that didn't want to do that. They wanted to repurpose everything on the property. So, um, we actually did have a planning board sketch plan meeting last, uh, Monday night and we feel that the proposed reuse of the property was well received by the board. Obviously, there are more studies that need to be done to meet their standards, but it was a positive productive meeting. We are requesting that you please allow us to move forward with the proposed repurposed property as proposing grant us the special exception for the adjunct use of a place of worship. The applicant and I are here to answer any of your questions on the proposal.
Very much. On second, anything like that? Hopefully you all, I apologize to staff comments, you know, late, uh, I was sick last week. Anything staff comments, I just gave you some background on, on sort of the, my experience with the church since it's not in use and on the market, we had a lot of people interested in, but uses were not conducive to the RFM zone. Everything from manufacturing to converting it into a single family home. Nothing secretly worked well with the event with Mr. Tibbetts the first time. We came to the determination that the wedding chapel idea actually was a good fit because it did, in our minds, at least using a broad description of a place of worship, it certainly seemed to fit. The use was no more intensive than what would normally happen at a church with a big knee services. We didn't feel, obviously, you don't know how this business is going to evolve. Lots of people are getting married on different days and weekends, right? I don't know how that's all worked out, but, you know, we felt it was in keeping with, it no more intensive than what you might normally experience at a place of worship. Obviously, the questions were, you know, reception, following reception business and how we wanted to conduct that, obviously, if the idea was just to use the existing buildings, probably would need major thought about this, but if fellowship hall were requiring to accommodate those types of processes. But to expand that use to the outside, expand that use to the outside, the tent area, proposed tent area, proposed patio areas, that definitely was more than what had existed there, and that's why he's here today to, to kind of redo the special exception issue, that adjunct, adjunct use. I provided you with a few definitions to, which I might clarify things a little bit with regard to adjunct use as well as portion, which can include a hall, theater, function room, auditorium, meeting room, or other assembly space, which alone or aggregated with other such assembly space occupies a priori, that it exceeds 100% of the priori portion or portions of the place portion. And I believe what we're seeing on the site plan here certainly demonstrates that. And then also athletic fields play, those playgrounds for similar, similar outdoor recreation facilities could be adjunct use, would be outdoor use of that space. That is, those two, those two examples seem to kind of fit Mr. Tibbetts' proposal best, so I provided those to you in the staff notes. Also, again, I think Craig's here tonight, probably to talk, I'm hoping he's going to talk a little bit about the historic aspects of the building, maybe not. The building is on the National Historic Register and not only, not only locally listed, but it's on the National Historic Register too. So along with that comes, you know, some, some things that have to be dealt with, it doesn't prohibit the use necessarily, or particularly the adjunct use doesn't prohibit that. It may be more pertinent when we talk about the quality situation in some of those places. Uh, that's all I have to say. I don't know about the comment, if you'd like to speak, this is...
Hi, Craig Freegrich, I am the chair of the Historic Preservation Committee. Many of us are just here to observe tonight. We're planning a meeting with these people out at our meeting on January 2nd, I presume to speak for many before we met, but my personal reaction is, is that it is hard to see a better way to use this property. The question is working out the details and we stumped to have difficulty coming to that. So we're just here to look at the certain protection right now and see what you guys do in whatever you usually, usually will do.
Yeah, there's a, just by the...
Kirk Freegrich, F R I E D R I C H, like Freegrich speaking.
As regards the awning, are you seeing the concept of the...
Yes.
The awning and, is there any special requirements that they could do?
No, I mean, it's, it's noticed, the planning boards asked us to review it. As I said, the committee members know about this because I told them it was on these two cabinets, but we haven't really looked at it and, you know, looked at it.
But nothing immediate is answered?
No, I mean, it's taken up a lot of areas, it's coming pretty close to the building. But, you know, it's also, it looks like it's going to be on the side away from what is the front, the two sides. So until we know more, I mean, I couldn't really measureize it, but certainly I don't see there's no stopper in there.
Is that enough for you? Is that perfect? Anybody else from the public who should speak? Well, other part, back to the board, questions?
I have a question from Ryan. Generally, is the town accepting that this party planning LLC is falls under the definition of a place of worship? Are they accepting that? I mean, I guess I look at this, this is an LLC, this is a religious organization that's tax exempt, that, you know, doesn't pay properly tax. And I'm wondering about the definition of a place of worship, is that like a tax definition? Is that the town definition? I mean, this sounds like an event venue to me and I just am wondering, that's not allowed in that zone, is it? I'm looking at the definition, I'm just curious.
Just, while he's looking, and did you read it, have a chance to read his comments yet on that?
I read his comments and I understand about, I'm, I'm wondering about what happened before it brought them to us to say that there are places of worship, I mean, which we're digging, isn't it?
Well, I appreciate, I, I kind of thought I answered that, but I'll try, I'll try again, again. Looking at the definition and I appreciate the comment because I haven't reviewed the place worship definition for a while. I just looked to see if it did make any mention of nonprofit status or anything like that, tax exempt status, and it does not. Again, what we, what we felt was, at this, in this day and age, very few actual religious organizations would probably, nor had they booked this building and it's been on the market for quite some time. The wedding chapel use of the building fit well with any other religious organization where people would only get, or at least used to in my younger years, get married in a church. And so that's what we were keen on, and we felt that use was compatible and similar enough to a place worship that would normally be supervised under some form of clergyman or, you know, that, that type of thing. We felt it was similar enough to that it could be substantiated as a place worship.
So it's only religious ceremonies, there won't be any sort of other events going on there, there'll always be something like that, basically?
What's the, actually, Mr.? What was the question?
Right.
Well, I'm in the wedding, wedding business, so I mean, focus on that. This is, I'm sorry, you just mentioned your name. Oh, my name is Mark Tibbetts. Sorry. On property February 15th. And I did talk with Ronnie and them, and proposed that to them. And, uh, as he said, a lot of, proposed a lot of ideas, this kind of, was a good use of the church. And so, um, two question on, yeah, I see weddings, I mean, would it be birthday party there? Yeah, but the, the way to make the money is to have a wedding there, they rent the hall, they rent the church, they rent the property, they're there for the wedding. That's kind of the focus, I was, I was going to, I was going to, I can probably make enough to pay the mortgage, you know what I mean? And when someone gets married, I'm a Christian, so the two people get married in a church and it suddenly, yeah, it's an offer of worship, of that kind of to God, that's the, I'm saying, the theology I have. And so when I thought, but Brian, it says, you know, people get married, they're really worshiping God, offering their couple up to God. So I says, you know, they're trying to keep the authenticity of the church, the beauty of that church, and then let people get married to it, because a lot of kids don't even go to church, do they? So maybe they'd like the experience to be married in a church and have, you know, maybe the front and the back. But I see that as the most of that is. Single, birthday party, I don't, you know, it's not going to be a performance, too.
Is every single event going to be a wedding? In other words, does every single event have to start out in a church?
I mean, are you celebrations of life? You know what I mean? So in a party business, I'd probably attend celebrations of life in the summer, and people call me up, something, that's not a wedding, but it is, it could be in the church and you're celebrating the life of their deceased person, too. So it's not a wedding, but someone might want to use the facility for that.
But you mentioned a birthday party, a birthday party is definitely not a wedding.
Birthday party is not a wedding, but it is a celebration, churches have celebrations too. Churches functioning, they run out the hall, I do a function at St. Patrick's Day, Pope meeting for a year, I do Pope 500 show for senior expo. Now, I don't plan on, no senior expo there, but, you know, churches do, a lot of other functions than just parents.
Is there a certain women that you're placing around the number of people that get in there?
125. There's 67 parking spots and a massive proposal inside for another 10 parking spots inside of fellowship hall, and that is more for caterer, caterer workers, photographer, those would be there all of the whole event.
Well, you think 67 parking spots is enough for 125 people?
Well, it's almost like two, two people per car. If you do two times 60, it's 120, two times 14, that's 134. I'm talking 125, so it's two people coming, being in a car.
Question, Brian. In this, as far as for property tax standpoint, they're not eligible for the nonprofit exemption for that, or the support exemption for those?
Not, that's not mine.
Yeah. I don't.
I would expect not, but I, I...
Okay. I think I'm paying taxes.
Yeah. I'm sorry. Yeah. With Scarborough, everyone pays taxes.
Yeah, and the unpaid tax is Buxton property, too.
Sure. Okay, no, it's part of Buxton, 300 something dollars, so Buxton, so 3,000, so it's just a... Good, thanks.
Is part of the property in Buxton?
Uh, the corner where the entrance is into the property is Buxton and it's not even a quarter acre, it's just a little strip there. So the driveway goes across Buxton, it's Scarborough.
And also broader relations in Buxton, though? What happened to me? Thanks, you talked about it.
I, I did. I did talk with the enforcement office, they did say that pretty much everything, all the approvals for this will come through the county of Scarborough and they just want to be able to re, take a look at some, everything, all the submissions, I've been giving a copy to the town for their review and they have comments, but they're not looking for a site plan review or excitement. Any questions?
Any questions? Funnels, tents, seasonal operation, what are the ones you expect to be operating?
Say May, May 15th, I'd rather the first. That's about the same thing. I've got a little bit of a...
So maybe one dog told you?
Yeah.
Interesting, if you're going to have day operations, hour operations, what would those be?
Being open there?
Yes. If you're going to have...
Mostly, mostly I would say, you know, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay.
In the party grill business, Saturday night is prime, everyone wants to get there on Saturday night, Friday nights, not too many weddings on Sundays, so it's, Saturday night is a lot of fun.
Okay, and what about hours of operation?
Well, I would say...
Evening, morning to seven at night?
Probably on Friday, Friday night, and there was a Friday wedding, I go to night clock, you know, and then Saturday, Friday morning, decorate and so they, you know, go in to that lot. Sunday, I don't think, you know, Sunday weddings.
So until 9:00 PM and just normal morning hours, because they made the caterer, whatever, so...
Yeah, cater, that's...
Kind of early. Could you anticipate any more under roof or under tent or under awning areas that you don't have shown on this? So this would be it?
Yeah.
One thing I noticed is the west entrance onto the facility, looks like it's pretty close to the intersection.
Yeah, it is, it's close.
Can you estimate how many vehicles from the stop, sorry, three? What kind of traffic comes down Broad Turn and stops there, how would that affect your, the end of your event or people coming in to the event? Do you have an idea of what kind of traffic coming down that, frequency of that's?
Well, in the day, it doesn't seem like a lot, I mean, I've noticed at 5:00, you know what I mean, when I've been on the surface, I'm trying to work on something, I've been trying to leave, so I'm going home. And so I take a left with other vehicles, I'm live from there, so, you know, I have, you know, people have been very quiet, stop, it's going to come out, and that day out.
But if you had 60 vehicles, might it be a hindrance to exiting that area?
Tens slower, yeah.
And again, 135 Max, the market, you see, why, I think I saw?
Is that based on, is that based on town's fire code or section? Um, I was thinking more on the, on the system, or the septic system, so that...
It wouldn't be outside of your vision to maybe hold family reunions there, smaller parties, fundraisers, that kind of stuff?
I mean, I'd like to be able to, but I don't see that as the focus.
But as a business person, if you could fill your time when there's not a wedding or some kind of, type of religious worship, could you see that occurring?
Yes.
Concert?
No.
Band?
Okay.
So not that kind of noise maker?
So I'm sorry, none of the weddings will have live bands?
I, it's, I think it might be a problem, so you might have to say just DJ. Because DJ, the problem what I've had, I used to have to think about the C account and then, you know, I had to have the bands couldn't control their noise level and they used to have people there with audio things and they just undo it, so they, they ended up restricting to DJs.
Is that going to be a requirement that you have for renting the area out?
I hadn't, I actually hadn't thought of that process, but I think it might have to go that way, right? You know, I mean, if it gets too loud, you know, the neighbors.
Right. And I've been to some, say, more rural church functions where someone has gotten married and I've seen alcohol being consumed in the parking lot, how would you manage that? And will you allow any, at any point, bring BYOB on its own property or go up for an alcohol license for the functions that you want?
They don't go for license, but I think it's easier way is there's companies out there that are licensed, they don't, they, they raise the pitch and folks, they afford their website, you know, our service... website, and our services, that there are a lot to choose, and I thought that was a pretty good idea.
So it's a possibility, might break that service launch on the property if one of the customers you have requested that?
Yes. So then, I mean, you have someone that's licensed doing an alcohol.
Certainly helps control liability.
Correct.
I have nothing else to ask more questions.
We had a question there. Just tell me a little bit more on the traffic study, the discussion, do you take? Right now, they're in the preliminary stages of that, and we're trying to get a hold. They said that it was in their plan, but they're having trouble finding who the actual person was that's doing the planning. So it's a little convoluted right now, who's actually doing it. So it's probably closer to two or three years until they actually get something ready for construction.
Sure.
So it may take some time, but the, so we just wanted to coordinate with them to make sure that what we're proposing isn't gonna be their design, not work, or vice versa. What the town's gonna, the planning board's gonna require is an actual traffic count study of the potential and eventual impacts of the existing intersection right now. So we'll talk more about this part a lot, and need for this and ability for another connection from a law on the county road, things like that.
Correct.
Yep.
This is still more, I would, I would do this a little differently, maybe help me out with my mind base, or if I'm a girl, I'm a girl. I see this as allowing a use to be defined as an accepted use in this zone. Special exception is an absentee. But the truth is that we're clarifying or redefining or fine tuning the language that allows it to be considered for places of worship. I don't believe we should put any limits on it, other than what is in this zone. I think we run into dangers when we start. Either it fits this, either it fits this requirement, it should be considered a regular use, like what we're doing, or it shouldn't be. Rather than putting restrictions, like you wouldn't do that to a church, to any other organization, they can just walk right in and do it. If Mark Radeen can start tomorrow morning in there as a church with a monitor.
I get to do research theology, so.
And if that's what you're taking up in there.
You wouldn't even be here.
Seriously. So I bring that up just as a point of reference. And I also know how important this building is. I drive by that building a lot. I personally think that I'm thrilled to hear that this is being repurposed, because it was highly regarded by the community. And I think it's something, I don't want any restrictions to hinder success. And again, I just think it's consistent with, if I believe that it meets definition as, I think Brian did, Mr. Longstaff did an excellent job of designing the position that the town is looking at this from, they're not planning what to do, but I think they really did a good job of focusing it in on, the use is very similar, the activity is very similar. Personally, if you prove this, just if you have a use and don't get locked down, a lot of the details are in the planning board to do that anyway. But that's my thought. Anyone want to challenge from that one?
A little bit.
Go ahead.
No, I just mean, I feel like, see, I always kind of really talk about this, it's kind of a precedent that we're establishing here, is this is a, I mean, this is a plus party rental, they've opened a separate LLC, and they want to open an event venue. I drive by there all the time, would love to see it there, think it's a great idea. I'm just wondering if this is the appropriate venue when it's a party planning event. And I understand that, you know, weddings are a religious event, ceremony, but I mean, as you just said, that's not all that's gonna be happening there. What concerns me is our stretch of this definition and what may happen down the road, and someone else trying to come in as a party planning venue for events, things like that.
That's a fair question.
That's kind of my concern, is the legality and the definitions, and, you know, I'm sure the owner was there before, was a religious person who was taxing them, those sort of things. To me, it's sort of a stretch of a definition.
To that point, you got, you know, I kind of want to jump out a second. To that point, for instance, tonight, we were in, etc., and the church had C Y O against parties, all the time. They, the kids were not smoking dope, were not drinking, they were dancing. I hope that you have dances there, and the kids from high school go there, because they won't be doing other things that they do. And I personally think that the more this has the use for success, the better it is for the community. And so that's kind of where I'm picking it from. And again, I think your point is different. You're saying, I'm not even sure it means a requirement, which I think is a good angle, I think it's a legitimate conversation. Does it fit? But to me, if we decide it does fit, it should just fit.
Well, then it fits for everyone, and I think that's my comment, is the floor is the big floor.
That's fair.
And I mean, I think I asked Brian, is it, can they apply and say, hey, we want to open an event venue in this, in this zone instead?
I would be surprised if you didn't have a church rent for them. A lot of smaller churches need places to rent. I would be very surprised if you didn't have a church, a small plant, and asked to rent this basement or something. They'd be amazed with it. Did you have a question for Brian or not? Ready to get you off?
Um, no, I think the town has made their stance.
Look, well, it's not they don't. It's ours.
Well, I mean, my understanding is we're not deciding tonight if they qualify as religious issues. I guess we have to go with the question.
Go, go.
Are we deciding tonight if they actually qualify as a place of worship? Or is that kind of?
No, we're not, but the town has done, I don't know if it's Longstaff or what, but the town, from what I've read, has said, look, this is a close enough definition that, from the looks of the town, the management team looked at it and said, this is a reasonable stretch, as it uses the same functions as would a.
That's a question for Brian, if you're interested.
No, I would, I would add, though, that this helps, think, we made that leap based on the body of evidence that there's an existing historic structure that is a place of worship in this corner lot. If someone came today and said, I have parcel A over on Long Road, the R F, same as the R F, in the R F district, and it's a quarter of an acre, and I want to put, I want to put a, a building on it that looks like a church, and I want to host events there, we'd say, no, that's not a use. If, if a church came, organized religion came, like the Rock Church, and they said, we've got a parcel, and you want to move our church there, and go to our church there, then we'd say, yes, because that is a valid use. We're allowing a use that's similar enough to that use, occupy a building where that use to. Can you see a difference there?
Yeah.
That's, that's how we've been, I mean, I'm not saying it's perfect. If somebody wanted to challenge it, they can certainly do an administrative appeal and challenge our, our reasoning for allowing this, this use to take place. I, I would ask the board not to go there tonight, because that's not what we're doing. We're here to decide whether this is an adjunct use or not. If somebody wants to challenge our decision, I would hope it wouldn't be the board, it's someone, an neighbor, or some other person. You're free to challenge who you want, but I, that's, that's how we got there, Karen. And I, you know, I, I'm not gonna say it's a perfect fit, but it certainly is the best fit that we've seen out of, I don't know, fourteen, fifteen entities that I've talked to that were interested in this property. And as someone said earlier, we did, the town did have a distinct interest in saving this structure, because somebody else had committed tort to death, bought it, tort to death, and it's gone. I think holding wedding events, ceremonies of life, I don't even see a problem with birthday parties. To me, that's a celebration of life in the other direction. So I don't have a problem with any of that, as so many look straight from the town of Scarborough. But certainly, if any board ever does, there's, there's a reason that happens.
Do you have any ideas of the last time this church was actually operated as a church?
I really don't. I think it was on the market for three years, maybe.
Would you like to take a stand? The question was, the case wasn't very, you know, when you.
I'm not an expert on this, but church had a list congregation in there, and they recently separated a few years, it was open any exact date.
Yeah, it's definitely been a few years.
Yeah, and it's, there have been people who talked to somebody else, or maybe about it, a lot of it's extensively modified, this building, which is valuable, because its interior is original, and it's not going to be disturbed. And I think this is going to be, like churches, with all sorts of things. I have this boy, I like to voice his opinions, I know church, I was just up here in Scarborough, we had a Weight Watchers meeting. Weight Watchers.
Oh, yes. I see what you mean.
You notice, I was looking at you all the time. Presumably, telling folks what your business is, but from an historical preservation perspective, which is our charge, to have somebody come in and say they are not going to disturb the building, and they're going to preserve it, and empty buildings deteriorate sometimes very quickly. I said, it's very hard not to see how this is a great idea, and be pretty flexible in accommodating that, and it's not going to be, or we're standing, the planning board has got real traffic concerns, and they will, they are very diligent. And if things went out of balance, I could make a suggestion, that's why Brian has got a fleet of public enforcement officers. But saying you could only have the wedding, but not have the parish better there, or not have our mince though there, because it's too much of a party, you know, I just don't, don't see it as really changing the use. Historically, it was an interior church. It's been other things. It's, it's name on the national register is odd, it's called a prospector's church. And it's, I'm not a knowledge person in our group, but there's been a lot of stuff done in that building that was not having quite church services, quite church, churches. But again, from a historical preservation, I can't see anything better coming down the road anytime soon. I'm sure, I think, if we are seeing, like, the planning board will be looking to make as possible.
Okay. No questions? Since we can pretty much justify the fact that that was an active church for many, many years under different.
Spoke this was filmed eighteen twenty-nine or something.
I've got to, I've got to assume that there haven't been many, many weddings out there, or receptions. I don't understand where this church is coming from. I agree with her a little bit, make it to the other's point. It's always been a church. Structurally, it's always, it's gonna continue to be a church, which could have functions that were constantly not in a church in the past, so I think I can. Questions? Two more. Looks like you have a license plan that's going into this, an engineered license plan for the parking here.
No, this is just a scheduled plan at this point, and it'll need to be, you'd have a full budget plan designed by a, like.
That's part of the plan. And looking at your waters, I don't have a full aerial photo, Mark, go ahead, print it off, an aerial photo, zoom in on that property. And it looks to me like roughly, you're about three hundred and sixty feet to the southwest. There's a building across Broadter, and then it should cross diagonally through that intersection. Roughly four hundred feet, there's another property owner over there. And then there's one directly across Route twenty-two. What is that? Is it a business of? Okay. That, and if I went northeast, how far to the next property owner if I went down Broadter?
That is some distance.
Okay, it looks a broader. More than what I see. Okay. And other, any other ones that might be within a four or five hundred foot range of this property that I couldn't see a aerial photo of?
I mean, going a long range, or, you know, a couple thousand.
But if it's any distance from what I see, it's four or five hundred feet anyways. Okay. So really, the crowbar closest to waters across the street, that would probably be your biggest noise issue. And the annoying noises, as distance gets further away from the source, it gets quieter as well. The one you're not on the side glaring too loud, really, it's the person across the street again, where you're going to get a hundred feet of buffer that likely gets the other part. Okay, thank you. Other questions? Just one more question, something useful. If you had a band come in or a DJ come in, where would he set up? Outside, right?
Look at the, look at the. So here's the Fellowship Hall, it's a church, the tent would be out back here, and obviously you bring the power back from here, and use it here for the sound, you know what I mean?
Is this a tent, is this tent enclosed all the way?
Yeah, you can put sidewalls up, and then you can close it. When you first put a tent up, it doesn't have walls, although if inside of the tent has a rock hole, it's enclosed the whole thing.
If you had a wedding in the middle of the summer, though.
Well.
But you wouldn't close it.
Well, it might be too hot, you can't, you can't put all the walls up, it might be too hot.
We have a good figure, just to.
Sorry.
Conversation just to give.
I apologize, I shouldn't have avoided it.
Just to summarize a little bit, an conversation regarding tent and noise, and sidewalls, and effective.
So, no, you wouldn't put walls up in July, you know what I mean? It's just gonna make the tent hot, you put a hundred, a hundred equal on a tent. I mean, just the bottom heat outside, you put the sweatshop. You have to have the walls there.
It's actually gonna be the second part, not only, that's the second part of the deal. Questions, Karen? So, do we do all this and then go through the items?
No, we can go through the items still. I, you know, thank you very much.
You should probably go through the items.
Yes, thank you very much. So when we grab a hold of the list here, this is a special session. Any other questions? I'll close up just to make sure. And, okay, so the first one is, closures from lack of sanitary health conditions, because the storage disposal, emissions of air or water, other aspects of its design and operation. Can you just read in what you have?
Yep.
And what, what you have.
A soap surface disposal system was designed for the capacity of a hundred and twenty-five guests and ten employees, vendors, photographers, things like that. This was designed by a certified site developer here from Bonview Partners LLC. And other than that, we do not anticipate any unhealthy conditions as a result of this special exception.
closures will not create unsafe vehicle or pedestrian traffic conditions that add to the existing, perceived traffic.
There, we do not, we do not anticipate the, the special use, special exceptions to create any unsafe vehicular, pedestrian traffic conditions. And allowing it at, it's also, it's not that it's gonna be unsafe, it may be more congested, but that some will be coming up to the planning board to process. There appears to be adequate, adequate site distance in each direction, either from this location, looking from the west, western driveway entrance, looking southerly, there seems to be plenty of site distance, and looking northerly, you're looking at the intersection and seeing the proposed driveway entrance. Looking left, you can see the intersection, and right, you can see forever. The traffic impact analysis will be prepared as part of the planning board approval, determining the estimated traffic patterns, corners, trips, and. the estimated traffic patterns, quantities of trips, and its effect on the area. There are no sidewalks, there's significantly pedestrian traffic in this area.
Posers will not create a, for the safety of the public, and those created by existing users in the neighborhood that will require substantial creative, physical fire, police protection, or existing users.
We have been in communication with the fire department to discuss any of the fire suppression requirements. The fire chief needs to review certain aspects of the construction of the awning, does not feel any further sprinkler, fire suppression devices such as sprinklers are needed for use. We will be communicating with the police department through the planning board process to ensure their need, their needs are met.
Posers will not cause sedimentation, erosion, or other adverse effects upon the marsh.
The proposed cycle will be required by the town of Scarborough to provide the necessary erosion control and stormwater treatment of the new impervious and valid areas per the main department of requirements of protection chapter by 100 storm waterways. Design will be reviewed by town, sat, and planned.
Posers will be battling existing uses in the neighborhood respective as a side that is being backed, that's the use, proximity to those structures and density of development.
We're not proposing any new permanent structures. The existing church has been a part of the area for over 200 years. The proposed function tent will only be seasonal structure, will be primarily screened from County Road and Broad Turn Road by the church and the hall, and will be taken down during the winter months. The property is surrounded by conservation land and public redlands.
You're not necessarily sure. Correct. And, uh, you have the oldest property as a person. Financial, financial capability, which is a requirement. And the battle with existing uses in the neighborhood respective of ways, hours of operation.
The property is surrounded by conservation land on two sides and two residential post lots across the public railways, where the generation of excessive noise, such as a TJ, will be limited to complete time hours as defined by the town of Scarborough, could be accordance.
And we're taking from where this is coming from, the reference to rural farming district. The rural farming district allows four places of worship and facilities, eight camps, uh, nursing home, rehab facilities, other things that consider, family daycares. So, I mean, the special exceptions for that area would be, uh, not, it really fits what we're here with. So it's really, to me, tied back to the actual, the, the special exceptions. Okay, other questions from the board, if there are some you should ask. All right, I'll put here. Uh, the sewage disposal, just to give the acceptance system, if you'd better design this thing. Comment, and it was a plan, it was a, it was a plan, whether it's used. And then the, uh. Sorry. The board wishes, Mr. Chairman, I have a front page copy of the design system, this is all, we want to see what else we have. Special just for erosion options. Just to be more than, than the board to see. Anybody want to see the, 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 the start, what's called this? We have that on record. Other questions from the board?
I'd like to move, move appeal number 2617.
I'll say, you hold, hold, what's your?
Um, I think it's pretty straightforward and.
I was just asking.
Uh, we could go line by line for.
I, I, the body motion, I think we should just approve it, because it is tired. The motion's standing right there.
Question, if there's any whatsoever, I'd say, yes, it's a special exception.
Mr. Chairman, I just thought, maybe asked the board members, did anyone feel any of this criteria were not?
Of course not, yes. Does anybody feel that any of these items might not meet that?
Is it premature for us to say that this is not an unsafe vehicular or pedestrian traffic condition when they don't have any of these reports? I mean, they're saying themselves, the planning board is saying to come back, they need to do more planning, and they don't have a traffic study and things like that. Do we say this is, this is not, this is safe, but we don't really know? I guess I'm kind of pushing back on that one a little bit. Because, I mean, I'm familiar with the intersection, and it is actually pretty dangerous, this is one of the intersection stuff to stop. And where you're pulling out on Broad Turn, that's like a blind corner as well. And so, you know, just knowing that intersection alone, it is pretty unsafe. So, I mean, just doing that alone never minds having cars flooding out of there. So I think with B, that's my only concern, is, I guess I'm up to you and Brian and Mark, and I say, you know, can we say that, you know, planning will take care of this, and they'll make sure that they're going to make sure that this is safe?
It would fall under planning's purview, but we have the right to say, no, it doesn't meet that without, if it doesn't meet one of the requirements of ours, if it doesn't meet our, our priorities, then that, that would put us behind. So, it's a fair question.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, under IDB, on record, it says that the traffic impact analysis will be prepared as part of the planning board approval. So if it doesn't pass planning board approval, because it fails that test, it won't pass planning board.
No questions?
So we can default and not answer questions, and you leave it to planning?
No, you don't have to default, you can, you can, you have, we as a board member, you have the right to say, we disagree, it doesn't fit. I believe that that's not really in our purview, although it is allowed, it, I shouldn't say that, it is in our purview. But I think the planning board will look more than, more than shake that up, especially because I can sound like the state's authority.
If I can back up to say, Mr. Chair, I think she has every right to not approve it based on her uncomfortableness or fear around something not being that, so under question B, if she felt that the analysis would not be sufficient to act as a backstop to prove that it's safe, that she would have the right right now to say, I agree with everything except for B and vote against it.
Let's go to the record. This, we want to take a vote, we're on, uh, the his map.
One, I want to stop sign, all of the concessions coming together, is right?
It's pretty.
Okay, I thought one was a direct.
Long play room continues.
So one, you're going to be, you're going to be a traffic head of the stop sign.
Coming up, Roger. So Mr. Sheen's comment, posers will not create unsafe vehicular and pedestrian traffic conditions that add to the, 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 fair question, does, uh, discussion on that. I would want to, we approve that section.
I just want to add, Mr. Chair, this is the first time that we've seen the planning board come in with requirements when it comes to us. And I've never heard in the past that we have had issues with them not following through what they said they were going to do. Just saying from historical records, I think the planning board will do what they request, require, and they requested to have that statement.
Just for reference, every board member actually said that. Does she have a second on?
What picture?
It's just a clarification on B, because I think it's a legitimate point, I, I.
I mean, I'm willing to vote yes on B, I just want to clarify and say, like, I think we've done this in the past, it's kind of insane, you know, relying on the planning board to follow through.
Mr. Sheen, that's why you're here, you did a great job with tough questions, so. Well, I'm glad you asked it, enough so that I think we have to go on.
Yeah, kind of, kind of odd that this is in, the planning board won't let us move forward unless we get approval from you, but we need approval from them to, on the traffic side, so it's kind of catch 22. So I'll withdraw my motion. But it took, took D. Had there not been something there that said that there was going to be a traffic study and the planning board's going to have a final say on this, I would probably not agree with this, I would probably say that if we pass, it's a known end of exception, so there's just, there seems to be a couple of stop measures that are going to take the place of us.
I agree with you.
I agree with you.
So I'm favorable to the, to that. Does anybody have any other concerns with any of the others?
No.
You didn't have some other question?
My second.
Nobody else has any concern about the other items? So, if you have to move. That moved approved, appeal number 2617, as presented.
Second.
Discussion on that one. Same now. Catching in this. That brings us to the next bill, which is tied to this one. This is the, uh. Always pushing my second.
I wish you'd show us. What is on that side? Is that like a platform or something? About that door, that thing, they're going to take that, I can't.
Second for, uh.
That's just a temporary stage that put there, I wanted a small patio on there, that that was just something I could do in the summer. Well, I, I took a picture this summer, I took a picture, I put a stage up, and I put a tent up, so I could see what maybe a tender on awning looked like, and it was only up for three days and a lot of phone calls. Then I got to keep me from Brian, what's going on? And the next thing I know, I was in Brian's office, so, but that's what the stage was for.
So you needed to put that up on, put the awning?
Put the, put the awning, so I wanted to make it level with the door level of the church, and take the whole fact, to see what it looked like. Even the fire department.
So why don't we go to, uh, practical difficulty? Appeal number 268A, practical difficulty, request by, uh, the town chapel LLC, on Road, this is map number two, also 5D again, and this one was trying to, this is my step. Got it? So this one.
Oh, okay. So basically, I thought it'd be nice to be able to, if someone got married in the church, that they could take and walk out of the church, because I built a stone patio from the church over to the fellowship hall, I call it fellowship hall, and, uh, so if it was raining, it would be very nice to have cocktails there, and, you know, and then on the left side of the church is where I wanted to garden, so the bride and groom could go out, take pictures where the gardens are, people mingle, going to the, to the hall, and, you know, a good time where they, you know, get to know, you know, relatives and all this, and then later on, they go out to the tent. The awning was basically to get recovery from the church into the hall, and maybe spot down some cocktails.
Uh, just for clarification, there are two awnings showing, correct? It's the 33 by 34 awning.
Correct, the big awning.
Sent between the two buildings.
Between the two buildings.
Thank you.
And just one second.
Yeah, the obvious, if it isn't obvious, the existing church building and fellowship hall are non-conforming structures with regard to the speed setback, the front yard setback, therefore, in Mr., to this proposal, he talked about attaching the building to the buildings, you know, to spread between, and in doing so, then that becomes part of that structure, and therefore, it would also exist within that footprint setback, and that's where the practical difficulty comes in. To be honest, if the awning was not attached to the buildings and was freestanding and secure, it would not be considered a permanent structure, and probably would not need practical maintenance. I'm not sure how, we don't have any detail on the awnings yet, so that's why.
That, that would be a question to me, I know that in the code it says, if I put a tent up between the buildings, there would be a tent to wait for anything. But, um, you know, the, the tent I put up this summer, you know, it's made of a certain vinyl, well, the awning that we put up is the exact same vinyl. So to me, it's, uh, it's a code, the code thing seems kind of strange, because I'm, if someone can put up an awning and attach it to the building, made it the same vinyl as the tent, but I couldn't, I can't put a tent up, which is, when I put a tent up, it was about a foot away from the thing, I could put that tent up, it was a rainy weekend, put it up, put my tent down, and then put lights props, which would look really pretty from building to building, instead of always having a tent up. But because of the code, when I put a tent up, codes have to have the tent heat, but materials in the awning, the materials in the tent are the exact same structure. But in an awning, you attach it to the building, which my tent is a freestanding thing, you know, we put a cup station, that's it. I think the code outdated according to, when it was built, only awning were out there. Now, now, years passed, now we're into this whole era of tents, but it's the exact same materials. And my question is, can the code be changed where I could put a tent up and it's doing the same thing, but I wouldn't have to put an awning up, attach it to the building, you're avoiding the historical thing, where you're attaching to the historical building, there, that could be a question down the road, or you just put a tent up and then take a tent?
Well, code can't be changed because it's the international building code, you know, life safety code, it's, it's a national code, and it has to do with semantics, but it has to do with the spacing between structures. So this freestanding is considered a structure, separate structure, if it's attached, it's considered an addition to the structure. So it's, it's, it's that kind of thing, it doesn't really get to what material is or anything else, it's actual distance between buildings that, that's being addressed.
In the fashion.
Yeah, and, and so it's, and it does seem a little bit silly, but that's where the problem is, it's not something that we can necessarily weigh in open blood, I think we just have to deal with that, that issue with time to deal with. The time comes to make the decision, can I attach, can I increase any one of the requirements? Now, half that coffee shop, that'll be dealt with through the building codes and fire department, not from a land use perspective. So all we're really talking about with this appeal is, does it meet practical difficulty criteria to exist in the front side?
This is the, the requirements.
The new debris to do, new surface, and the problem is not the general conditions that make it. The church was built in 1800 before the surrounding houses were built. The proposed variance is not based on the general conditions that we're dealing with. The granting of variance will not produce a new driver change, territory will not, like I'm a recent, which will affect, one of the reuse or fair money value, but. The proposed awning will not detrimentally affect the, but in properties, the applicant attempts to use attractive colors scheme to complement the two existing structures, the client, uh, client, clients using the facility will want a high quality aesthetically pleasing design as part of their way, also the fair market value of the conservation and the piece itself. The practical difficulties not to self action taken by the applicant or the fire department. The church was built in 1800 before the town utilized front yard setbacks, that the proposed variance would be allowing the awning to connect the two structures while not extending beyond the front base of either of the buildings.
No physical alternatives available to the applicant.
Other locations were examined, but this seemed to be the best location for proposed use.
Variant of variance will result in bringing in the natural problem, the unit of performance as well.
Note, but both of the existing buildings that it's connecting are already non-reforming, the awning will not be extending beyond the front base of either of the buildings.
Variant of variance will not be easy to, just like, uh, natural variance.
The area that the awning covering is already non-vegetated ground surface, we cannot anticipate any adverse effect of the natural environment as a result of this variance. We cannot anticipate any adverse effect of the natural variet as a result of this variance.
I'm prepared to begin it. Uh, this is the first I've heard of the awning being attached to the building. And I just do not know, uh, the other, any members will respond to it any more importantly. I don't know, on the front of the interior will respond if this is a attached historic structure. But even whether you prove it, does it happen to be done as a real site? But it's just part of working, working through exactly how this will be done.
Questions?
Fair question. There's a point of clarification. If the awning cannot be made of both quarters of structures, can there be an attachment to the structure? Is that considered anchored to the structure? Do you understand the question? My thought is, if you put a tent between the two, it could be self-supported on attachment structure. But you might want to support the posts of that tent from a wall and have whatever kind of an anchor, right, stabilize in those posts. Is that considered an attachment? Right. Because we normally, I would think, as much stakes and guy wires going in all directions, but sandwiched between two buildings, you can't go up in a pointed buildings. So can he attach to the structure to hold in that point? Was that considered...
Well, I guess I'm not clear on the difference between awning attached to the two buildings and what they're...
What I'm trying to say, let's say he had dimension, what's the dimension between the two buildings? So he has a tent that fits perfectly between them. So he got a peak in the middle like a normal tent, water's going to run down. And then it's going to run down the face of the political structures. He probably wants to put a gutter or something so that people can walk underneath, not getting wet. But he's also going to want to support that tent so that the wind doesn't knock it over, so it is well-supported from tumbling in the north-south direction. But he's going to need some kind of east-west support, I believe, to keep the posts out so they don't tumble.
Again, I don't see the difference between...
Right.
I'm not, I, I don't have any... Let me, let me just say this. We don't have any detail on what the awning actually is. I don't know if the awning is one piece of block stretching between the buildings or a personal post in the middle of it. I have no idea. We don't have any detail. None of it, in my mind. All, all the questions to the board is, is whatever design that chooses to be, can it exist in line with the buildings? Or are you going to require to meet it for the different setback? Where it doesn't really even touch the buildings, it's back in part. That's, that's, you know, that's quite important. You know, you can still have the stone patio, just don't cover it.
Does it have to, I guess my question is, does it have to add to the...
If it acts, it doesn't have to. If it acts independent to the structures, then it has to meet structural setbacks. That's the problem. So by attaching it becomes an expansion of the structure or an addition to the structure as opposed to a separate structure.
Even like a name of guy wire of any type?
I can't really answer that question because I haven't seen the details.
All right. I'm gonna stop.
You should anything out of me tonight. So, I, I think you get where you're going with this. You're basically trying to, there's no definition per se at all. You got a circle there, you got a round...
Right. I can take a piece of block with a couple of two-by-fours, screw it into the building, and that's considered...
You got those ones that kind of rings out by... So, I think what you're saying is exactly what Tivis was trying to talk about. He's saying, if, if there's no definition of what one actually looks like, if it happens to look like a tent, but is in fact connected, it is now an awning. That's the...
That's where I'm going with that. And there's a reason why I'm asking the question back. Out of all the questions, as you know, Mr. Chair, I struggle with four every time it comes out. Because it says there's no feasible alternative. I believe if you put an independent structure that can stand between the two, he doesn't even need to be talking to us, that's the feasible alternative. So if he has a tent that fits perfectly between those structures, and now you got water that runs down from the peak, down the sides, and goes to the edge of the building, he's not attaching to it, but he puts a gutter underneath the edges of those tents, the two edges of the tent. Now people can walk from building to building, it's just like walking underneath the roof with no water coming down. Because all that water and the rain is going to go right down the side of the building. And anybody leaving the door coming out either side is going to get rained on. It's going to come down the roof, collect that water, and drop right down the edge of the building. So my, my point was, if you could put a tent in there that was self-sustained, self-standing, not attached to the building, and then put a gutter on one building and a gutter on the other, under the trip edge...
I think you only go a lot far to get out the tent to be away from that. But that was the problem. I mean, that's what he, that's what he was proposing to do. I mean, he wanted, he wanted to have a tent that fit perfectly between those buildings. The building and fire codes say that most, that has to be mapped away from those.
Even though it's a tent. Even though it's a tent.
Well, I can see, not a good one.
Right.
In a way, you're trying to get to the point where you can justify that as a walkway. If you believe that's a good idea, and it makes sense and consistent with the requirements of the airport. Connecting it meets that definition, in my opinion. And so I would say, what it looks like, it could look like it. But it would leave definitions to allow it to be a vegetable.
The board members.
I mean, what you were saying is basically what I was saying. An awning, well, what's the definition of a tent? Perfect, and you're basically going to make the same material, the same structure. You could, I could have it exactly fit that, you can stay straight down. All frame tents, you don't have to go out with guy wires. Most old tents go out six feet, five feet. Frame tents, you can put a stick straight down by the leg. You'll anchor a frame to that. That's how we can, it's even really close. That's why you have frame tents. So, it's the definition of an awning and tent. Another way of looking at this, let's say it wasn't intended all of off, off as a fixed structure. They just wanted to make a walkway that's covered between the two.
Like you know from Jack's...
Right. That's in essence what you're doing. Except this allows it to come down as seasonal as opposed to being a permanent structure. So I, I think I'm, sorry, I think I'm speaking frankly. If you think that, if you take the, if you take the awning issue from the foundation, right, and figure that the wooden structure is a hash, then they're the same place. And my question is, do you want that? Is that a reasonable expectation for, for the requirement of this?
That's why I would struggle with the answering, if there is no other feasible alternative to their box. Would it all be wood structure? That's open, unclosed?
It still has setbacks.
Okay.
Boy, yeah, it needs to like, something, same, it has to be building setbacks.
So could it be a practice?
Or would have to be... Yeah, it's any structure existing in the, for setbacks, it's going to have to have a variance.
Wood structure has to be straight. Yeah, I mean, it gets into other issues that we, we're not prepared to answer or discuss today, unfortunately. Because I don't have any detail. And I don't know that Mark's thought through it far enough to have it.
I did talk to Paul from cover. He's trying, he got out of the problem there, and he was going to draw me aside.
But you didn't want to go too far because you could have gone a... The edge of use, and therefore, there was no point in getting into a lot of engineering detail. Basically, just looking at it. Think of it any way you want to think of it. Material doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if it's made of bricks or wood tree. If it, if it exists and is attached to the two buildings, the question is, does it meet the test for practical difficulty if it's aligned and the manner shown on the site and the vinyls of the application? That's, that's really all. I can't, I don't know that you can get to an answer on a feasible alternative. I just don't know, we know enough about it. If you don't, then you absolutely can't prove it, I would think. But that's up to you guys to determine. Do you have enough information? Would it matter what it's made of? Does that setback form a sort of no-go for that's, that's, that's a good question.
Where are the doors on the side of those buildings?
So I'll second, this isn't the answer to this question.
This is the front of the building. And this is the front of the building. So the door is, so we're here, like...
Yeah, the church is here. The door is there. The engine door is there.
Maybe four minutes.
The other thing I, the other thing I heard too is, you're looking at parking spaces, you're only going to have sixty-five, four hundred and twenty-five people, which may or may not be what, if you have a birthday party, there may be one person coming in a car to draw a bomb to you. If you're putting that someplace else in the location, you're making this more dangerous for parking, coming, so people coming even out of that intersection. You do not have to have sixty-five parking spaces, I would assume. You're going to have to push it back, you're going to have to take some of the parking spaces.
Oh, brilliant.
Yeah, you can move it back. How many parking spaces?
Oh, how many do you have?
I'm just saying, I'm making, would be lost if you actually pushed it back, which would be...
You probably have six parking spaces?
Which I don't think would be enough to detect the damage.
That's a word that's wrong.
One other question I had is, when I guess it's different color tents and stuff, for birthday parties, there's no desire for like a red and blue one in between there?
Well, the awning guy, he said, uh, he did a beautiful, um, bookmark, which is gray and, uh, on the deck, gray doors on the church and gray deck. And he said, "Come on, you can probably get it." And it's a real great color. I think it's an added color. And it has to be something that's, um, stretch, um, stretch.
Is this property decided that it's going to be, I know you said it's going to be different.
Yeah, that's a thirty by thirty frame tent.
Height-wise?
Height-wise, yeah. That would be entirely that. Most likely, it'd be more traditional, but a traditional tent would go straight across.
Okay, sorry, come on.
I just think they were, they're trying to put the carton in front of the holster. The way they're looking at it is, what they're trying to do is get a focal, change the setback to put some sort of a structure between the two buildings. They don't even know what that structure is. And assuming that the planning board is going to be fully reviewing anything that goes on on that property, commercial point of view. So, there's some concern. All we should be doing is assuming, should we allow some kind of a structure to be fifteen point three feet from the front property line? Well, no, sure. Forget about all this other stuff because we can't answer it. Great, might go back to the committee, and they might do research and come back to the planning board, but, you know, if they put another structure between those two buildings, it no longer is going to be a historical building. So that's all that matters. So, let's just concentrate on the setback period. We'll have the planning board figure out all the other stuff. Because that's where it's all going to come about. You know, the traffic study is going to be coming to the land. All they're asking us to do is two things. Should this be church activity? And should we allow a setback for changes?
I did hear Mr. Blase on this. There are plenty of other obstacles that are going to have to cross, especially for the storeroom society. I mean, with the structure here, you're now changing a lot of water, that's going to be going against these two historical buildings. So it would be a simple vacation there, so we don't have a lot of water going against them, potentially rotting. That's just one example that comes to mind, but that's neither here nor there for us to decide. So I would, I would rather let the planning board do what we want, since a lot's been thrown off here for this one.
So just a clarification. So are you saying that you'd rather allow this to go through, kind of language side, monologue? What's, what's your...
Hello?
I would allow. Just trying to make sure that you're...
The other thing too is, I mean, as a representative from the storeroom society, actually, they're going to, this isn't going to be a private structure. This is going to be up from what, May, October, or whatever. You're going to be taking things around and off these buildings, and it may come to you folks, and you may say, hey, we don't want that to happen because you're acting a starting south. Who knows? I mean, we got some agents that are close to us today.
Is this, is this one to have side of... Is this one to have side of modern, uh, planning, uh, style?
Oh, yeah, I would probably put a side of it. Here's, here's my thought, yeah, I'll get the picture showed to you. Here's my thought on this, comes to safety. Uh, I like the idea of having that there with the side on the front. That's shown, so they can come around in the road. It's kind of different twist on it, but for me, it actually, um, if you look at the picture on page, it's the last page, bottom picture. It means allow the more control of the space, uh, if, if the society on, I ask this to put that. Which I think is kind of important. But that's my thought, and I can agree with the other board member, I, I overall want a problem that I think actually doesn't need to be managed to it. Because it's protected, especially young, so I can track kids that does kind of separate, say apart, backside from the twenty-two, which is very sad.
I would move to questions down.
The other side going onto the side of the church, is that like your reception hall or something?
Yeah, for small country halls, you have to go way, you have to have five people off the side.
Question for struggling with, no other feasible alternative to be able to be able to separate areas. What did you consider when you were going through this? What are your other options? And what doesn't work in one? For, right now, you want to put this awning up. The only way you can do that is by coming to us for, for a variance. But it's saying there's some other feasible alternative to what you want to do. This doesn't work without it. So if it's that important, what did you consider? What were those alternatives and why was it a considerable alternative in one?
I figured, because I, according to what I understand, the prime, I can't build any more, we need to have a curb, so I'm still in the setback. I want to put a curb, it'll be great, it'll be greenery, all that, with the porch. But then, of course, you're going to arrange yourself some problems. But then you come into a setback, now you've got to put a curb there. It would be, if you put a setback, that you build a structure. So, these, but, so it could be just an open stone patio, it ends up, because everyone says, no, an open stone patio, actually, my feeling is good, you're developing, that's all I hear. I don't have an answer for that. I think it's just, you can't, uh, keep, you know, the whole act, you know, with, you know, the mall, I think that they're all one building, it's not separate. I mean, the wedding party goes to this church, and they're kind of all cocktails, and you see that they're all together.
But Mr. Rooney's point, if you didn't put this up, you just sprung up lights there and you made it great. Are you going to be putting anything up there if this kid put this up?
Oh, yes, the garden, we, yeah, we'd have to have something here, you know. Or I'm going to put, um, some tall trees and stuff like that, and make it a hedge or something, so then it shows a definite... You don't go that much.
so then it shows that definitely, you don't go that direction.
Much, I mean, there's a lot of setbacks up there, you gotta try to line up the buildings along that tunnel, all the other, it might be that, not just coming to that, but some other stuff.
I agree, it'd be hard to find another surface to install it.
I'd agree on that. So, I'll give you a moment. To, to be honest, I'd like to decide, it looks nice, it kind of mixed it all dealt together. If I ask a question about doing birthday parties, I could do rent heads up there, I suppose, you're just the one one, I like the fact that you're willing to keep it there. Before I talk to someone else, I think it's gonna be a really simple, the whole building structures. So, there's nothing really around right there, neighbors across the street, so I don't understand how it's...
Yeah, most structure doesn't, he's gonna ask the driving members, I think it's, it doesn't...
I agree, I mean, based on the discussions that we've had today, noted that he wants it to be as safe and easy, I don't see any issues with this one, why be there?
More...
I think the changes are good, I mean, I think if Eddie King having his property alive and having stuff there is gonna help increase the value of the property around him having it.
Action, this is definition, sorry. Part of the difficulty, not a result of action taken by the applicant, by their own. And no other feasible alternative available, the setback, the counter, where is?
Usually, this is usually what I really support, and I can see this one a little bit more in this evening because of the fact that, because they put something else, you have, I think, their parking spaces, they're already lay out parking spaces as it is. There's just really not much we can do, I think, that this is, that's good, it looks nice. Yes, other feasible alternatives don't do it, or lights or something like that, like comfortable, probably, it is, one way, I'd be a definite one, so.
I think there's always that position of this one. I think the patio option is available too, I think you could put hedges or fence up between two buildings on front, that's a protective barrier. I don't think it really changes the character that much without having the awning, like creating some kind of a patio effect between the two buildings, I think it's a reasonable alternative, I think there are feasible alternatives. It might not be the first choice, but I think there are alternatives.
I tend to agree with Mr. Crockett on this one, but based on the discussions with the applicant, instead of going out and seeing, big factor in having is there is rate vacation, having a dry space between the two buildings. So, with that said, I think they have explored other options, I mean, otherwise it wouldn't be here, so I think that the board has...
I kind of agree with that also, except for the fact that we really don't know at this one time, what the structure's doing right, or what it's gonna do. So again, I'm more concerned about, is that back or...
I mean, I think you've done a good job in establishing that there are no other feasible alternatives, I mean, you simply want to have a dry space in between these two buildings, that's the term, you want an awning to keep it dry. To me, I disagree with Mr. Lozelle, and I say patio does not keep that dry, that's not a feasible alternative. There is no feasible alternative for you to keep that space between those two buildings.
I'm assuming the, the design, I like the fact that it separates the active side of the church from twenty-two. Obviously, there are other ways to accomplish that, but that's not, number one is not hard, that, because that's not the issue, the issue isn't the cost, the issue I know, but I think it does. It's not a feasible alternative to the issue, but that's not the issue, but the support for the argument is, it accomplishes something, that's a benefit that above yawn, and I'd like to be quite there.
All in favor of number four?
We'll be back. Those, one. Branding branch will tell, we have a problem. What do you want to concern the property?
Yeah, and it's gonna become more of an open space, to be honest with you, I've been buying the property several times, and I thought it was all, like, rotted out inside, I couldn't guarantee you'd build this for the building that was usable, because I never saw anything really going on. So I think making it something that's gonna be usable and viable and being used all the time, so it's gonna be used throughout the summer seasons and things, definitely gonna bring out some people who probably like it in the area as well, it's gonna be something that's gonna work for them, and, and definitely it's...
I agree with what the applicant said in the statement, that it's not extending beyond the building, so it's not a detriment to, or making the conditioning worse than it is.
If the previous result, and bringing the applicant's property more clearly into performance with, take that with a glass, this is my question, was if you may go to that, that garage, there's always that garage, it's a mess, it doesn't really fit it, or does it apply? Mike, so, based on the fact that I can get to go, I don't think this is a perfect question, I go, but I don't know, and I'm fine with it, districting it. Five, what do you have here, five minutes? And Janice, I think six. Branding branch will not have an increased view of respect from Anthony Fire.
Just wanna touch that, the question, please, on is that, and maybe you, I've got any other question, against the back of that, is that, with the, whatever it is down there, is that what it's supposed to do, or is it just down?
It's all function.
Yeah, they're not extending that, they're not extending the back of it.
You're, this is a runoff for segmentation, so.
I think they've shown with the plans that they've already made preparations of trying to start dealing with environmental impacts here, so I also agree.
I agree, I think the venue has this effect, certainly a possible travel.
And I see all that, no issues, all very well, seven is irrelevant, so that motion on, question.
Motion to accept appeal number twenty-six eighteen, please present.
Second, special motion. Just one thing of clarification, I have a great, just because he chose not to agree with one item, it is not consistent. To not vote yes, if he chooses to vote yes, at least the property should go through, because it's a single item that decided to allow over. Sometimes when somebody votes no on one item, all these things, you assume that you can't vote yes, when I said no on one item, I'm like, I've made my decision. It's not that simple. So he may still vote no, I don't know what he can do, but that being said, I would, if it's easy to say, it's not unreasonable to realize that he may go with one's decision on that, that gets to the world, and that's exciting, that's just my question, I believe it's a, not that. So, discussion motion, that's all in favor, and Janice. Greg, let's just...
I just want to thank Ryan, I want to thank Ryan for all the work, two years that he's had here, I really appreciate all of Ryan's feedback, his comments, and I find them very helpful. Thank you.
I agree with that, I think, I think, well, it's just, we're kind of summarizing, thank you, Ben.
I love this, everybody have a holiday, happy new year.
To Jared. On there, and that's what. Happy New Year.